I'd like to welcome everyone to the Elizabethan City Schools February Board of Education Meeting. Thank you guys for being here. It's very cold and it's nice and warm in here, but by the way, all of you look absolutely lovely, so thank you guys. And very handsome, I'm sorry, you guys don't want to be called lovely. I want to take a minute, and I know I speak on behalf of the school board, to say thank you for all the schools for our wonderful gift, it's like Christmas. And we have a blanket and cookies, and I'm as happy as I could possibly be. So if this meeting gets long, we're good to go up here. So we may part with a cookie if we need to. Anyway, if you would, please stand, and Mr. Alexander is going to lead us in the pledge of flag in a moment of silence.
As we pause for a moment of silence, I ask that you think of Dr. Cory Gardner, who had surgery this morning, and also Ms. Julie Smith, whose dad, Roy Blevins, is seriously ill. Thank you.
Attention, to me, pledge. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, if Mr. Jordan Semerly and Ms. Dan Mills and Ms. Brian Colbert will come forward, we have a presentation. Do you have the additional microphone, Ms. Trent? We want y'all just standing, no, just hang on. We don't want to embarrass y'all as much as possible.
And again, thank you for letting us do this, but this is in appreciation of Jordan Semerly, obviously standing to my right, for being the first DHS student in the aviation program to earn his solo wings. Jordan did this on Friday, December 20th, 2013, in a Cessna 152 at the Greenville Airport, and this is obviously given to you, Jordan, by the Elizabethan City Board of Education here in January 2014. At this point in time, though, to understand more about what I've just read, this was also in the paper, in case you did not see it. I'll pass this over to Mr. Mills, his instructor.
Thanks very much. It's a privilege to be here, and I asked Jordan if he'd just share a little bit, a minute or two, or a couple of minutes, about his thoughts about his experience with the aviation program at Elizabethan High School, and then a little bit about his solo. He just mentioned to me today, he couldn't even, can hardly imagine doing solo, and it's not like it's real, but Jordan, share with us a little bit.
First of all, I'd just like to give thanks to Elizabethan High School, you, Mr. Mills. It means a lot. You guys have really helped me get where I am, what I've done, hope that I can get further. The program's really meant a lot to me, because it's helped me chase after what is, to me, honestly, my dream. I want to fly, that's what I want to do. Just, this is still kind of surreal that I've even gotten as far as I have, I hope to take it much further. Being the first high school to have a full motion simulator, I believe I ended up in the right place for it. Really great experience soloing. Really, it was really fun, it was a rush. Just really fun, I'm really happy I had the opportunity. Thank you.
Ms. Brewer, will you step over there with the recipient, with these guys too? Y'all scoot in, okay?
Just a couple of words of thanks to Mr. Alexander and the school board. You folks, you two right here, plus the other, the three, all right, plus a couple of other ones, made it happen. And if it wasn't for your all's insight and encouragement and support, you know, this wouldn't happen. And like I've seen with some of my students, and quite a few of my students, you know, when we addressed you guys to bring the possibility of the simulator, we said that we're not going to have that many students that are actually going to get into aviation, but if we can get some of the kids that are about ready to drop out of school, and have no motivation to come to school, and we can get them into a program that they enjoy and have fun with, and they start to realize, hey, I do have to learn how to read, I do have to know my math, I do need to know my science, and my English, and my history. And we've seen that in our program. You can come and ask me names, and I can give you names and faces of young men and women that have, I think, really have turned their life around. And as a result of your guys' insight and courage to step up and say, hey, we're willing to spend this kind of money on these young folks here at Elizabethan. So again, you have my heartfelt appreciation and thanks so much. So thanks for the privilege of being part of the team.
And Mr. Mills, this is the fifth year of the Sullibur landing in the Hudson, if I'm not mistaken, and things of this nature. Maybe someday, Mr. Semerly will bring the bird down safely, as he did.
Somewhere other than in a river, right?
Mr. Elliott, Mr. Lockhart, if you'll come forward. Folks, as you noticed on your left, folks, those pictures from '08, '09, all the way through last year, you may have noticed, parents, some of your children there, and I know some of their peers are in there as well, but before you leave, if you get a chance, please check those 20 by 30 pictures out.
Get in line, make sure you're in the windows. First of all, Mr. Lockhart and I both would like to thank the Elizabethan City Schools and our school board for the recognition of these students this evening. I am indeed fortunate to be the band director of Elizabethan High School for many reasons. I work in a very supportive community. I am very lucky to work with Chris Lockhart, who I believe is a phenomenal middle school teacher, that does a fabulous job of preparing the students to go into the high school. But most importantly, I'm blessed that I'm allowed to work with really excellent students that understand what we're trying to achieve. And even though we're being recognized this evening for being the state champion, the Tennessee Division II state champion, I think what we're most recognized for is that we have just outstanding young ladies and gentlemen in the band. I was very pleased today, Mr. Lockhart, I work with Mr. Lockhart every day, and when they had an honor day program, and when they came back, there was just a very, very small group, and I said to Mr. Lockhart, where are all the other students? And he said, oh, they're staying to have their picture made. All the A students have their picture made. And of course, I was beaming with pride, because so many of the band students at the middle school are A students. Well, I'm very lucky also, because at high school, many of these students have already been accepted to go to college, they're very excited about their future plans, not that college is the pot of gold at the end of the rainbow, but for many of these students, this is something they're excited about. And I was teasing with them just the other day, and I said, oh, didn't you get the word, you all are failed? And they went, yeah, no. They're ready to go on to the next part of their life. But I am indeed very fortunate to work with these children, and they have been very, very successful. This group has three state champions, correct? And of course, you thought you got who dude on the fourth one, right? Yes, okay. So they are, they have three state championships. I don't think, on a regional level, that they have been ever defeated, is that correct? Can y'all think of a time? No. So this is pretty exciting for them, marching band wise, and I know this for a fact, they have never been in any type of competition at all, whether it be marching band, or concert, or anything, that they have not received the highest rating that you can receive. And that speaks very, very highly of them, the dedication that they've had, and the work that they've done. But we want to thank you tonight for the recognition. This has become, I'm glad to say, an annual event, where the students, where the seniors come and get recognized by the school board, and we were getting ready to leave today, and the students said, don't forget to remind us about the thing tonight. And I said, okay, right, let me remind you of something that you just told me to remind you of. So this has become a very, very pleasant event for us, and we're indeed grateful that you allowed us to be here this evening. And that's all I have to say. Mr. Lockhart, did you have anything?
Very well.
Okay. Thank you very much. People say, do you have a hard time talking? No, I have a hard time not talking. But it's very easy to talk about something that is so pleasant to do. In my job, I often puzzle the fact that people say, oh, I don't really want to go to work, and I always go, I can't believe I get paid to do this. Not enough. But it is really, it's really an exciting thing to do, and I have enjoyed being here, and I've enjoyed working with Mr. Lockhart, of course, but mostly, I've enjoyed working with students. So that's it. So we're going to take a picture? Awesome. One last thing I would say is, this group is very sad that they never got to march in the new stadium, right? But they all have agreed that they're looking forward to buying their reserve tickets on the home side when we get the new one. Thank you all very much.
He sure does, yeah.
As we get ready to move on, I would like to welcome Mr. Tester, who came in just a minute ago, and I want to thank you for agreeing to be the liaison between the school board and city council for another year. Thank you, and it's always nice to see your smiling face. I'm not sure if you lost a bet, or how that you ended up with us, but thank you for agreeing to do this for another year. All right, it's time for citizens to speak in accordance with Board Policy 1.404. Anyone wishing to address the board, please come forward, state your name and address.
Good evening, I'm Marsha Taylor, 2602 Beachwood Drive, Elizabethan. I'm here tonight to see our senior band members be recognized this evening. I don't have a senior in the band this year, but I've chaffed around the students for the last four years that they've been involved in the band, so I'm known as Band Mom to many of them. I'm proud of our seniors and all that they have accomplished. I want to take a moment to thank you as a board for voting to approve the capital project plan in our school system. I sent each of you a letter back in October, letting you know my personal reasons why I believe the athletic complex should be given first priority. If city council would fund all three projects, you wouldn't have to make these hard decisions by placing priority for one project over another. I appreciate all you've done to listen to the citizens in our town, attend countless capital plan meetings, study the projects, and do what is in the best interest of our children. I just appreciate all you've done, thank you for your time.
Thank you, anyone else? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on, it's time to approve the consent and regular agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
移到
Thank you, you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on the consent or regular agenda?
Madam Chairman, on number two, under consent, approved general purpose fund, December 31st. With that, I know when I studied the budget this month, my favorite thing to do, but anyway, I notice monies, do they put monies into the fund that we anticipate coming in, or on page 5043, I notice monies in there that we anticipate...
Do we want to pull that out and talk about it?
Do you want to make that more of the regular agenda items? And that way, that'll give us a minute to let Ms. Wilson...
That's all I had to ask, but you can do that if you want, I don't care.
That's the proper way to do it, Ms. Armstrong, is if you want to discuss that particular item, and not have it included on the vote with the others, you'll have to pull it off and put it on the regular agenda. Consent items are not supposed to be discussion items.
Now, if we're going to discuss it, we can make it...
Number 16.
Is it 16?
16.
Okay, we can make that, this one's 15, so we can make that number 16. So we will move off the consent agenda, number two, which is approved general purpose fund, we'll make that number 16, and Ms. Wilson, do you need access to any information so that you can answer that question, or...
I'm not sure what you said.
Okay, all right, we'll just play it by you when we get to it. Okay. Anybody else have any other things they want to have questions?
Well, did we get, one more question about it. Did we get a statement from Jackson Shields, Iser and Hope for the month of October?
Do you want to add that to the agenda? Discussion of that statement, or?
To my knowledge, that's not part of the information in the back of this package. I just signed off of that yesterday, I believe, and so it wasn't that, it wasn't ready to go at that point, so the answer is probably no, but I think it was something like $1,600, if I'm not mistaken.
Mr. Alexander, what you signed yesterday was for the month of December, and Mrs. Armstrong's question was for October.
Since this isn't on the agenda, can we go ahead and approve the agenda, then we'll talk about it? We can add it if you want to.
All right, anything else?
About on the agenda?
Yes, this is the first thing we would do, so just making sure everybody's good. All right. Item on the floor is to approve consent and regular agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. All right, Ms. Alexander.
Several things before the personnel update. First of all, there's a commendation is due to our maintenance individuals. That's Richie Burr, Vicki Clark, Sam Harrison, Randy Bradley, Tim Crowe, Luther Perkins, and Joey Trent, for we had pipes burst in three of our schools. That was Harry McCormick Eastside and Elizabethan High School during this cold weather, and they jumped in there as a team and took care of those things, and the principals of those schools were elated to find out that those items, those problems were fixed, so that the school could be ready to go the next day. And so we commend them for doing that. The honcho of that outfit, of course, is Mr. Trent. There's also a commendation in order for our math and English coaches, respectfully, that's respectfully. It's Marsha Taylor and Hannah Wilson, who are the coaches, the interventionists at the schools, the teachers, the principals, who changed their schedules on this two-hour delay to make the benchmark testing occur. And that's a hard thing to do, on the fly, and as we visited the schools, everything was running as normally as could be. It was also a full moon day, and some of you people in administration know that, but everything was just as calm as it could be, and we understand that the testing went very, very well, so I appreciate that. Further expression of appreciation for Mr. Eddie Pless and Ms. Teresa Simcox for an enormous amount of work that was done for the recommendation for the new software program, that's on regular agenda item number nine. Folks, this is a big decision which affects most every aspect of the data at every school and the central office, and certainly is the means by which the state determines our funding. So under those circumstances, that's the recommendation today, and those people work very hard, and we're so thankful for all they've done. Like, thank our payroll department, that segment of it, Cindy Walker and Ms. Coball, they worked to make sure that there was no delay when we had the bad weather in the checks for our employees by turning them out a day early, just to make sure. And we, please, Ms. Wilson, tell them that we are so thankful. Also, our entire finance department that is under the direction of Ms. Wilson, received an exceptional audit that was in the paper, and we should certainly commend them for that. So with that in mind, we'll move on with the personnel update. There's a second page to that that has been added by Mrs. Perkins. First of all, new hires, Ryan White, DHS assistant baseball coach, effective 1-2-14. Resignations, Rebecca Johnson, DHS assistant to the teacher, effective 12-31. Jimmy Eggers, DHS cook, effective 1-15. Ryan White, under resignations, TA Dugger assistant baseball coach, effective 1-6-14. Christopher Berry, TA Dugger head coach, that's baseball coach, effective 1-10. A leave of absence, Regina Orr, Westside Lancher monitor, from 12-6 to 3-31-14. Amanda Ledford, TA Dugger teacher, from 2-10-14 to 3-28-14. Kathy Sanders, TA Dugger assistant to the teacher, from 2-26 to 3-21. Substitute teachers, Rachel Wagner, effective 1-16. Ryan Henderson, effective 1-16. And Katina Reese, effective 1-16. For, in reference to other reports, I believe that Mrs. Armstrong wanted Mr. Van Hes to respond on the TA Dugger fields, and we appreciate his being here.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thanks, sir.
I always appreciate the opportunity to talk about exciting projects that we have going on in our school system, and we're certainly excited about the progress that's been made as we close in on completing these two field projects at TA Dugger. Ms. Armstrong had requested some information, and so what I just handed you was a copy of her email, so you could see what was asked. The second page is kind of a written summary that I put together for each of those, and I won't insult you by reading it, however, I will, you know, briefly go over it, and just audibly at least, let you know the answers to some of those questions. As far as funding for the project, at this point, we're thinking $385,960 will complete the project, and Ms. Armstrong also had a question about where those funds came from. There was no half-cent sales tax money used on this project at all, this all came from reserves, fund balance. There was also a question about donations. If you see there the second bullet, we've only received one monetary donation, and the board approved that on the April 18th meeting, it was for $2,500 to sod the baseball infield. The other donations listed there, as you can see, are in kind, they're either items someone donated, or labor. We had labor for the dugout and the scores tag. We had labor for the dugout and the scorer's tower. We also had, well, not the scorer's tower, that was separate. We had the block and brick used for the dugout and the scorer's tower, which again, that scorer's tower includes restrooms and a concession building. And as, in addition to that brick dust, we've, someone donated six ton of brick dust for that, for this project to spread on both fields, so we're certainly very appreciative of that. And then, of course, the fencing is kind of what started this whole project back, you know, I don't know, about a year and a half ago. As far as procedures to develop the project, just in general, you know, we reviewed the site. We looked at the different configurations, you know, to make sure it was possible to put those fields in place. And then, we talked about the different components that we could put in there, dugouts, scorer's tower, batting cages, those kinds of things. And then, we put the project out for bid, and if you remember, when we put the project out for bid, it came in over budget. And so, we worked with the lowest bidder, GRC, and we value engineered that project to where we could get a product that we were going to feel comfortable with, that it was going to meet the needs of the schools. And so, that's how that process went. And then, of course, at that point, you know, after you approved the general contractor, then we started on construction. As far as environmental engineering report, there wasn't one that was necessary on this site. However, of course, it was approved by the, you know, the fire marshal, the local building inspector, as well as TDEC, Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation. And the good thing about this project is we actually reduced the amount of impervious service, surface. So, what that means is the asphalt area, we actually reduced that amount by about twenty-five percent, which is always a positive from TDEC's standpoint. So, that's, that's why this project didn't need an environment, an environmental engineer study, because we were reducing that hard surface area. Let's see here. As far as the completion, where we are, you can see there the work that still needs to be completed. We're doing, putting the finishing touches on the dugouts and scorer's tower. We still need to hook up the scoreboards and then install some netting down the baselines and above the backstops. And as always, anyone that's interested, we certainly will take, continue to take donations, either, again, in-kind or money, to help us wrap up that project. And I want to say a special thank you to the high school baseball team who came up last week and helped spread the brick dust on the fields. So, you know, it truly is a community project, and those guys, even though they're at the high school, they realize how important that is to the student athletes at TA Dugger. So, I just, I thought that was a great thing that they were willing to do. There was, I guess, are any questions on that?
The reason, one reason I ask this is that I've had so many questions ask me, and I didn't have the answers for them. Especially on the funds, and are those ball fields going to be ready when ball season comes around?
Yes, ma'am.
When is that?
Um, they, I think they can start practicing at the end of this month, but I don't think they start actually playing until around the middle, late part of February.
Mr. Womp, where do you know the...
And you can play your softball games and your baseball games at the same time, okay?
We can. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I was interested in the environmental, because of the water situation there, and I know, when I've driven by there, you can think, oh, my gosh, that's a lot of water on that ball field.
Yep. Unfortunately, if you remember the fact that it was over budget, one of the things that we had in the design was the infield drainage that we had to remove because of the cost. So, the next step was sloping of the outfield and infield to try to take care of that. So, that's one thing about the brick dust, that gives you a chance to go in and raise up some of those low spots. It, it will be a work in progress for the next couple of years, you know. Unfortunately, you don't just put a field in and everything's great, you know, you have settle areas, so it'll be a work in progress for the next few years. But I know that they're obviously extremely excited about the opportunity to play and practice on campus, and we are as well.
It's just hard to imagine that much water can stand on a field that really, when you look at it, it looks so...
Mm-hmm. It does. It does, but it has, it has a slight grade to it, yeah, that you really, you can't see, you know, with the naked eye, but that's, that's the design. I did have one question, if I could, that you, you had, there was a question about the proper use of this land, on, on your request here. You said proper use of this land has been questioned. I wasn't really sure what, what that meant.
Oh, that was, oh, if we should have used it for ball fields, or should we test it for something else to go on that property?
Okay.
I've had that, gosh, several times there.
Right.
Mr. Van Hes, did you tell me that there might be a community work day or a work day on the field that...
I've talked to Mr. Burleson, the coach, and he has not set that date yet, but there will be a date, and I'll try to let you, let you know, because again, we'd love to have anyone, everyone out there to help, you know, tidy up, straighten up all the loose ends.
Okay. Yeah, let us know. That'd be great.
Baseball coach?
Yes, ma'am.
Baseball coach?
It's Ms. Bonnie Peters, correct?
I think so.
Is Ms. Nave, Ms. Nave help at the high school last year?
I would like to say that once we have our ribbon-cutting ceremony to which individuals like the board and, of course, liaison to the council be invited, they'll see that it's a quality, a quality project there, and that's what we're hoping to do on the other capital projects, not cut corners to the point that we cut the quality out of it. So, that's, and once you see that, I think you'll, once you can actually walk across it and see it, I think you'll, you'll be pleased with what we've done.
Thank you, Mr. Van Hes.
Thank you.
Time to move on to the regular agenda, so, oh, I'm sorry.
I have a statement to make under other...
Oh, I'm so sorry. Go right ahead.
My legs cooperate. This letter that we got from Ms. Owens, um, email, well, I was not very happy with that letter. And so, I thought, can we, this letter is so negative, and I've written all this down so that I can remember. In the letter, she said she's writing it on behalf of the Elizabethan City Board of Education, and in an attempt to avoid a potential conflict. And so, I got to thinking about that. I did not agree with the letter, and the way it was written, I sure did not agree with it. And I just wanted to let the people know in the community and in the school system that I knew nothing about this until it appeared in my computer, and I had no idea that somebody had asked for a letter to be written. And the first thought was, is this legal? And I called Nashville and talked with an attorney, and he said, yes, it was legal to do that if the executive committee did request that. And I, I don't know if he requested it, or if she just said, you know, I'm going to write him a letter in Elizabethan. But the letter is, it's, to me, I read it as a threat almost to city council for their actions that they've taken. And she said that whatever steps, if they need to, they'll take more steps in order to get the funds to go ahead with our projects. And then, I got to thinking, well, does this mean lawsuit? Because I've set through some lawsuits, and that's not very pleasant, I'll tell you. But I had, I had to go back and read it. I've read it three or four times, I guess. I think council, have you set a date for a workshop?
Actually, we have, I'm going to be bringing that up at the end of the meeting. We have a workshop. I'm going to give that date to you at the end of our meeting tonight, when I have some other, some information for you. So, yes, so Mr. Tester and I have come up with a tentative date, and so, I'll give that to you at the end of the meeting.
Is this date, have you talked with the mayor about that?
Yes, we've worked, Mr. Tester and I have come up with a date, and at the end of the meeting, whenever we're going through all the other extra little things I need to tell you, we'll go over that then.
And so, I think that will be a positive thing to do that.
Hope so.
And I think some good decisions will come out of that. But I don't want any more letters. Yeah, I don't care if she writes a half a dozen, just don't send me a negative, in my opinion, threatening, intimidating letter to me, because I didn't agree with lots of it, as you can see.
Well, I will...
I wanted to mention that. I had nothing to do with that letter.
I will tell you that, that it was, the executive committee did request that, and very briefly, after the December council meeting, when Mr. Alexander and I were there, and we were under the impression that there was going to be a vote, and we did not know until the meeting that that wasn't going to be the case. And Ms. Owens started immediately trying to make contact with council's attorney. She tried phones, she tried email, and there, there was no contact. I reached out to the mayor, and he and I talked for the first time last Thursday prior to the city council meeting. So, she, we asked her to write the letter, and actually, Mr. Alexander and I sat on it for about two weeks, and then, we decided to have her send it. I'm sorry that you weren't happy with it, and hopefully, we won't have to do any more letters, but that was our decision, so.
Madam Chairman, I have, I hesitate to bring this up, but I, I must. And I'm, I listened very respectfully, but there comes a point at which we must follow order. And if something is not on the agenda, I do not appreciate bringing things up, reading statements that are not on the agenda where we can have time to think through, an answer, to reply, to have the background information as a board that's required. In our policies we've covered, we have a week ahead of time that we're to get our agenda items on. This is a recurrent problem, and I'm, I'm trying to be as respectful as I can, and I'm just going to say this, you know, just in general terms, but one of the parts of our oath that we took was to be supportive of the board and the board's decisions, whether that be capital projects, whether that be budgets, whether that be bids, whether that be personnel decisions or any other things. And it greatly concerns me that it seems a bit unethical to bring things forward at a time and then not support something that is on behalf of a board. Our attorney represents the board. If you have a problem with it, we need to get it on the agenda and talk about it, but we need to have time to prepare. So, I'm asking all of you to please give us the same courtesy to let us have time to think through issues that are going to be discussed. I'd like to have read that letter more. I'd like to know what points in particular, and hash those out if we want to in a public forum. A lot of these things that we bring and talk about, they're not on the agenda, they pull us away and detract from the actual business, and it slows our meetings, it, it clogs them up. I'm, I'm very sorry, I'm not trying to be contentious, I want us to work together, but I want to ask that in the future, we really try to put things that are this controversial out and let us have an opportunity to talk about it at the agenda process. And when we go to vote for consent and regular, that means we're going to talk about it, you know, that's where we do that. But it's standard parliamentary procedure, and I think we need to follow it.
Okay. Excuse me. Doctor, may I, do appreciate those comments, but under the word "other," if we have not, as I say, I did not see the letter ahead of time, and I don't know if you were able to see it ahead of time either. But in either case, under the word "other," this is where you can mention things, we don't have to go into a debate about it, but this can be called out and then at a later time further discussed. And I'm, I'm pleased that the word "other" is there so that we can bring out some of the points or the different things that may arise that we're unhappy with, or that we have concerns about, not necessarily unhappy, or things that we're happy with. And of course, the baseball field fell under that as well. So, I'm, I'm pleased that we have the word "other," so we can bring these things to attention, and then we can address them later on. So, thank you for, for that. And I understand the reasons you're saying that, but that's, that's about the only place we can inject things that we get, that we have not had touch with or have not seen.
I believe the letter went out well ahead of seven days. I would think "other" came up, but I, I appreciate that. There is some, there is some room for discussion. I would think it would have to do with business that we're expecting to discuss.
All right. Anything else? Moving on to the regular agenda. First item is to approve bid twenty thirteen dash twenty fourteen dash oh-three SN, thank you, Mr. Alexander, the purchase of milk and ice cream from Prairie Farms for the bid period February one, twenty fourteen through July thirty-one, twenty fourteen. Prairie Farms was the lowest responsible compliant bidder. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you. Anyone want to discuss this, or have any questions?
I was hoping maybe she would share a little more information as to why she prepared this one. Is she here?
No, she's, she had surgery.
Okay.
That's, that's the, if you notice the last sentence in that, the lowest responsible compliant bidder.
Okay. But we have dealt with these people before.
Ms. Wilson?
Prairie Farms is our current milk and ice cream vendor, and they are the lowest bidder as well. And we have two, because milk companies have consolidated.
I understand.
So, we're down to two.
Okay. Thank you.
I didn't even know there was a company, Prairie Farms. Do they have that in the grocery store? I have no idea. I don't know.
Any other discussion? Item on the floor is to approve bid twenty thirteen dash twenty fourteen dash oh-three dash SN, the purchase of milk and ice cream from Prairie Farms for the bid period February one, twenty fourteen through July thirty-one, twenty fourteen. Prairie Farms was the lowest responsible compliant bidder. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Next item is approved purchase of sixty-six passenger Thomas bus from Mid-South Bus Center with optional seat belts using bid FY twenty thirteen dash twenty fourteen dash oh-three in the amount of eighty-five thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Hutchins?
Yes.
Anybody have any questions?
If anyone has a question, Mr. Hutchins is ready.
I called early. Thank you.
How many does this, that make it now? Fifteen?
Fifteen. Last two.
Two special ed buses, two extra buses, it should be fifteen. We lose, we got lost to, so still, I think, at fifteen. This was, I will hit, this was in November when we purchased a special ed bus, we requested a hundred-and-twenty-day bids from the companies so that we could use those, because we knew that we were going to be coming back to buy or ask for another bus in January, which we are. This is to replace one of the two that went out of service yesterday. So, the difference between this one and what we purchased in November is we're not getting air conditioning on this bus, but we are getting the optional seat belts.
And this purchase here will come in our next budget.
Yes, this is paid for fourteen, fifteen bucks. Yes, sir.
It says this, it has the white on the top. I love this kind of buses. Is that Thomas?
It is a Thomas, and it's an optional item. When we, when we actually purchased that, they gave that to us at no cost. So, they haven't done that since, so.
Yeah, it goes by my house all the time.
Anybody else have any questions? Item on the floor is approved purchase of sixty-six passenger Thomas bus from Mid-South Bus Center with optional seat belts using bid FY twenty thirteen dash twenty fourteen All opposed? Motion carries. Next item is approved selection of Skyward as recommended by ECS administrative staff to be the vendor chosen from a list of three to five possible vendors provided by the SDE for our district's student information system. If this recommendation is approved, appropriate paperwork will be submitted to the SDE for contract completion with Skyward. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
If there are questions on this, Mr. Pliss stands ready to respond to it. They have, as I indicated in the opening, worked very hard, and Mrs. Simcox along with him. And this is a very important decision, as all that you make are. But under the circumstances, our people will be trained in this if you so choose to approve it. And it, as I understand it, and if anybody knows, certainly Mrs. Simcox knows what's expected and what it'll have to do. And she concurs that this is what we need. But if you have questions, you can ask Mr. Pliss, who's very articulate technically.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Pliss?
The article in the paper was very good, too, as far as Skyward, which I'm sure we all saw, so, thank you.
All right. Hearing none. Item on the floor is approved selection of Skyward as recommended by ECS administrative staff to be the vendor chosen from a list of three to five possible vendors provided by the SDE for our district's student information system. If this recommendation is approved, appropriate paperwork will be submitted to the SDE for contract completion with Skyward. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next item is review of board policy 2.200, annual operating budget. And Ms. Armstrong, I believe you requested this?
I did. Thank you. Since the fiscal board policies were to be reviewed this particular month, I read every one of them. And I pulled those that I thought maybe a board member would like to look at this and see if it needs to be changed or leave as is. Like on your annual operating budget. And sometimes we have so many policies, we just can't seem to do some of the things we need to do. Like on line 22, the director of schools and the chairman of board shall develop a budget preparation calendar. Now, we have in ours, no later than January 1st of the current school year. And I don't know if that's state law or not. We can't change it if it is state law. But if you want to stay with the January 1st, that's fine with me. I think they're kind of pushing it a little bit.
Well, Mr. Alexander just handed me a 2014-2015 budget timeline. So it looks like he has one in place.
It's in place?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's good.
Yep.
That's good. I had no idea. Now, does the board approve that?
No. No, they just says you have to have it. And Ms. Wilson has prepared that. And that's why, she came to us, and that's why the chair is having this first budget workshop.
Which I will be announcing when our first budget workshop is going to be at the end of the meeting. So we have that planned and ready to go.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else with this particular budget? I mean, this particular policy? If anybody wants to talk about? Ms. Armstrong, anything else with this one? Anything else with this particular?
No, 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 no.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. The next one is review of board policy 2.401, gifts and bequests. And Ms. Armstrong, I believe this is you as well? Ms. Armstrong, did you want to talk about the next one?
You don't have to vote on that.
No, we're not. We're just asking, we moved on to the next one. I asked what you wanted to talk about, the gifts and bequests, please.
Yeah, I'm sitting here reading. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Gifts and bequests, I thought this was a really interesting one. In that the board will officially express appreciation to the donor, and all major gifts will be reported to the board and publicly announced. And I don't know that we've always done that. We may have, and I just haven't paid any attention to it. But I think it's good that it be publicly announced, and they get credit for doing what they've done. Okay. Well, I starred number two on contributions of equipment because that has come before the board several times, when people do give, they give equipment, or they give something that can go on the playground and so on. It has to have board approval. And then, number four, any supplies, materials, or equipment valued at $1,000 or more shall be reported to the board at the next regularly scheduled meeting of the board. And I even read the accessory policies. But I don't know if we've always announced that when they give just $1,000.
May I say, as it relates to the board's officially expressed appreciation to the donor example, that is Michael Whitehead and the in-kind donation of $50,000, that was announced as quickly as we got that information. Also, in number two, contributions of equipment served that may involve major costs for installation, maintenance, and initial or continued, continuing financial commitment that was given to us outright, and that belongs to our system now. And we brought before you the amount of money it would cost for fencing and everything that goes along with it. So we followed that. So we try to be compliant with this, and I think we have been.
The publicly announce doesn't actually say that we have to announce the donor, just that it be, that the donation be publicly announced. If a donor does not wish to have their name in the public, it should not be publicly announced because by their request. But it doesn't say that the donor's name be released.
But since we were making a plaque in this situation, we-
Right. No, I understand. Some would prefer it. But there are times where people come before the-
Oh, absolutely.
-system and would like to be anonymous.
Doctor, may I say, they don't mention our names, but we'll give you this. We're just as tickled one way or the other.
I just want to make sure we don't suppress donations from people who would like us to be embarrassed, to not be embarrassed by, yes.
Anything else with this policy?
No, no.
Okay.
Now, I didn't put the next one in, so.
Yes. Well, we'll go from here, so.
Opposed.
All right. Next item is approved first reading of board policy 2.802, payroll procedures as advised. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much.
What was the, I'm gonna approve it as is, but what was the reason for now?
Ms. Wilson actually, Ms. Wilson actually asked to put this on there.
You'll notice the change is under the payroll procedures, bullet number one. It originally said that certificated personnel would be paid in 10 or 12 monthly installments. With having a lot of folks starting at the, sometimes the last days of July, first of August, and to get 10 or 12 checks, the first one is not until September 15th. So what this would allow is for there to be an August 15th check for some of those folks who start three years earlier.
Okay.
So it's just monthly installments rather than putting the number there.
I have another question. I know in the past, some of the teachers like to get their other two, let's say, the July and August check ahead. Are they still, are they still gonna have that option?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's what the 10 or 12, that's still there. We pay September through June, and if you choose the 12, you get your July and August in June as well.
Okay. Well, I had a line drawn through it, so I thought you was on meeting those 10s. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Item on the floor, approved first reading of board policy 2.802, payroll procedures as revised. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Next one is review of board policy 2.806, bids and quotations. And Ms. Armstrong, I believe you requested this?
Right. This one has been discussed several times. I know when years pass on bids and quotations. Shall be, of course, state law. I think I found it two or three places just yesterday. And how much you spend as to determine whether it's board approval. And number, line 12, the practice of splitting in order or dividing items to be purchased to avoid the use of bidding or other purchasing procedures is prohibited. And that has been questioned, so I did highlight that. I do think this one could use some changes, but I wouldn't want to do that myself without consulting Tennessee school boards. But if you want to find on bids, it's 49-2-203, Tennessee code. I think it's on page 251.
What was that number again? What was the, what was the number again?
And in the New Orange, I think I found it on 251.
Okay.
On 252. I don't remember which page.
Okay.
And then I found it another place, too.
Anybody else have anything on this? Okay.
Nothing except I hope that we will follow this.
Well, we do, and we'll continue to.
Some cases, we have.
The only comment I have there, if there was any questions or concerns, our auditors who do our audit every year would bring that to our attention, I'm sure, if we weren't going by proper processes in our bids. Apparently, we have pretty good audits, so. Yeah, I think they would bring it to our attention if we weren't following our-
I think there's one thing, based on our audits, that we can be absolutely certain is that we have followed this letter, this policy to the, I mean, to the 10th degree. And we would never insult any of you to think that you're not doing your job. We know you do your job correctly. We know you follow our policies. We know you follow the procedures. And we are all, I want that to be as clear as that can possibly be. We have pretty much spotless audits, and this is a huge part of it. And they do look at this. So rest assured, this policy is being followed by our administration. And last one on the regular part of the agenda, and then we're gonna move on to the two other things. Review of board policy 2.900, student activity funds management. And Ms. Armstrong, you requested this as well?
Right. This is one that was brought to my attention by a parent that had children at Westside, I believe. I can't swear to that one. But anyway, it has been brought to my attention. I think the, at one point, the children were out selling things in order to raise funds for activities, which I'm enjoying the band for right now. It is super.
I remember back in the days when I was over different PTAs and PTOs, and when they, when the students, schools do offer, you know, the opportunity for the students to participate, they do follow this policy. Because we, we, over the years, the many years that I was involved in that, we had to change it over time. And so all of the PTAs, PTOs, PTACs, they follow this policy. And principals make sure that's taken care of. So I think we're, I'm positive that we're in good shape with that, having done that for many, many years.
And also, as part of the audit report.
Yes, exactly. Yeah. And they would have caught that and brought that to our attention. And so, again, good job on an audit, and good job on everybody on making sure that these policies are followed. Anything else on this one? Okay. Moving over to the supplemental page. Item 15, approved donation of bus number 12, following decommissioning, to the Elizabethan Carter County Boys and Girls Club to help provide transportation for elementary students in Elizabethan and Carter County who participate in the after-school programs at the Elizabethan Carter County Boys and Girls Club. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
At this time, just a second, Mr. Hutchins had an opportunity to respond to this. As he indicated, two of our buses have gone offline after, I guess, 17 years. And one of, especially number 12, Jimmy Hilton's, he's been kept up and clean as a pen and things of this nature. He felt it was appropriate to donate to the Boys and Girls Club to make sure that their children get safely, and this involves county students as well. But most of those kids are smaller and things of this nature. And I think in most cases, Mr. Wagner, one of our employees, does the driving and the transporting on that, and does a great job at that. So at this point, Ms. Jeanne Wright, who is the new director there, and there is a new board as well there, and we're impressed with them. And we're excited to be able to help them if the board agrees to do that. Because I think Mr. Hutchins said the most we could probably get from that was six or $700, and we feel that it would be better utilized going, transporting those children.
Personally, I think it's a good thing, and I'm glad that we're able to do this. But one question I had for Mr. Hutchins earlier today was to make sure that we are released from any liabilities in transferring the ownership from the school system to the, and make sure that there's not any liabilities that could come back for us. I'm sure that would not be the case. That's the only concern. I'm glad we're able to do this.
We've done this before, haven't we?
Yes.
I thought so. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Come on up.
You know, this is one of the nice things that we're able to do. And it doesn't happen very often. Usually, at the end of 17 years, you know, while these buses, they've already been kicked to the curb. But in years past, it's been, it's been a past practice, you know, for us to do this. When we've had a bus that's been in decent shape, and as Mr. Alexander alluded, bus number 12 is a, or has been a tremendous bus for us. I met Jeanne Wright when she first came into town, and very impressed. And I know that she's done a good job, word of mouth speaks well in our community. And I mentioned to her the possibility of having a bus available January the 15th, and she was ready. And she's here. And this is, again, it's an opportunity for the Board of Education to partner with the Boys and Girls Club, who transport students from our elementary schools every day, so that we don't have to, because we aren't able to. And I just think it's a great gesture on behalf of the board.
Well, this should be a fun vote. And welcome, by the way. Welcome. Item on the floor is approved donation of bus number 12, following decommissioning, to the Elizabethan Carter County Boys and Girls Club to help provide transportation for elementary students in Elizabethan and Carter County who participate in the after-school programs at the Elizabethan Carter County Boys and Girls Club. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Enjoy your bus. And the last item on the agenda is approved general purpose fund, December 31, 2013. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I get a second? All right. Ms. Armstrong, your question?
Um, I've already voted, but I can ask this question. On page 43, do you have your? Oh, you don't have it. Well, can we put into the budget?
What account number are you referring to?
I'm sorry.
Rather than page number, which account number are you referring?
On this page, can you put into the budget anticipated monies and?
I think what Mrs. Armstrong is referring to, it's when we amended the budget at the call meeting and added the bond funds. And we put that into our capital outlay funds at the request of city council. Those are the funds she's questioning. Those funds were budgeted there at the request of council. Those are anticipated funds.
I didn't know if that was a legal issue or not, but evidently it is.
No.
Even though you don't have it.
Actually, when you prepare a budget, you don't have any of those funds in hand when you prepare the budget. So those budgets, those funds are budgeted there in anticipation that we will receive those. And that's the procedure that council wanted us to follow.
I'm not gonna try that with my funds, I don't think. I have it, and I don't have it.
Anybody else have any other questions? Somebody else? Item on the floor is approved general purpose fund, December 31, 2013. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Couple things I need for everyone to not check out on- All opposed? Couple things I need for everyone to not check out on me yet and hang on. Our February meeting is going to be on the 20th. We normally meet at 5:30. In the past, we've met an hour earlier for our first budget workshop. So that will be the third Thursday, February the 20th. We will start the meeting with a 5:30 budget workshop. So everyone, please try to be there for that. Again, I was working with Mr. Tester, and we came up with the date of January 31st at 5 o'clock here for a joint workshop between the Council and the City Council. And one of the first things we did, as everybody always asks, is can Dr. May work with his schedule? So we worked with Dr. May, Mr. Tester worked with the Council members. We requested that we have it here simply because we got a big room. We can configure it however we want so that we can talk to each other. So January 31st, 5 o'clock here for our workshop with Council, 5:30 prior to the Board meeting on the 20th. And also, I have a copy of, we're going to be working on Mr. Alexander's evaluation. And what I would like to request is that everyone work on those, and please have them return to the central office by the 11th, which is when you would request any agenda items be placed on the agenda. If you have questions, please feel free to meet with Mr. Alexander. I'm sure he can answer any questions. And then I will put all this together and give it to everyone, and then I will meet with Mr. Alexander once everything is compiled. So, that's a lot. And so we'll be seeing each other again in a couple of weeks. Our next regularly scheduled Board meeting will be Thursday, February 20th, 2014, excuse me, 5:30 in the Mac Pierce Boardroom. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.